Thank you. Oh, and was this the only card that you gave me? Didn't you say there's another one? Is there another open forum card? Okay. All right, it is seven o'clock, so I will get us started. Good evening, everyone. I will call our regular city council meeting being held here in the Richfield Municipal Center to order. It is the meeting of November 22, 2022. The first item on our agenda is for all that are able to please stand up and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is ours, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and then I think we are looking to change the agenda around a little bit, right? So, Councilmember Whelan?
Yes, I would make a motion that we approve the agenda with one amendment, that the consent calendar and its sub items be moved to right now before the open forum.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions from folks? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. We have moved the agenda in the consent calendar up to the next item. So that was just, you included the approval of the agenda, so I don't need to do that. We can just go straight into the consent calendar. All right, consent calendar to be read by City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider approval for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at St. Richards Catholic Church, 7540 Penn Avenue South, for their grand gala taking place December 3, 2022. Item B, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 13, 2022, to consider the renewal of a pond broker and second goods dealer license for 2023 Metro Pond and Gun. Item C, consider approval of a third amendment to the agreement with the City of Bloomington for the provision of public health services for the City of Richfield for 2023. Item D, consider the adoption of a resolution accepting a watershed-based implementation funding grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Board of Water and Soil Resources for the Sheridan Pond Improvement Project and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the grant agreement. Item E, consider approval of a resolution establishing a public safety special revenue fund to track receipt and spending of the opioid settlement fund. And I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second?
The motion has been made to move this consent calendar and seconded. Any comments or questions on the consent calendar?
I just wish to say thank you for the flexibility and the order of the agenda.
Absolutely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the consent calendar has been approved. Thank you, Mary, for joining us. And please let Mike know we are thinking of him to get better. Okay, now we can go to the remain, back to the top of our agenda, which is the open forum. So we do have, I believe, two people here in person for the open forum. Before I call one of them up, I just want to let people know, remind the public what the open forum is. It's an opportunity for anyone to come and address the city council. They have up to three minutes to share whatever you would like with us. It's not, we won't be going back and forth in a discussion, but it's just time for you to share something you'd like. People can submit their comments to our staff before the city council meeting via email. They can, and then that will be read during the open forum time. You can show up in person and sign a card to speak in person, or you can call into the phone line. And that information is on the website and on the agenda. The phone number is 1-415-655-0001. The webinar access code is 2463-575-8478. And the password is 1234. So I will, I have one card right now, so I will ask Ruane to please step up and to share her comments to the microphone. And if you would, please share your address as well, and then you have up to three minutes to share your comments.
Thank you. 2421 West 65th Street, Richfield. I have a number of questions I would like to put to staff and to council. Regarding the recent election of the more than 4,000 absentee ballot counted, how many remained housed or stored under the roof of this municipal building for over a period of 48 hours? How many ballots were counted from the machines housed in this municipal building? What is the longest period of time any ballot would have been housed within this municipal building? Who served as members of the absentee ballot board? And how often were these board members called upon to perform duties? Were copies made of all the ballot? Where are the originals at this time? Moving on to another matter. In 2016, my entire neighborhood was placed upon the Minnesota Pollution Control's Superfund Priority List of polluted areas where releases of hazardous substances, pollutants, and contaminants should be removed or remediated as per Minnesota Statute 1158B.20. The state of Minnesota was aware of this polluted area as early as 2012, and since then it has been monitoring the site. Board members, oh, there. Excuse me. As of 2022, the site has not been removed from the list. I have been told by Mr. Gary, I'm sorry, Mr. Greg Small, a senior official of the Pollution Agency, that a plume of contaminated groundwater exists within the boundaries of my neighborhood. This plume pollutes the soil, the air, and the groundwater in its vicinity and perhaps beyond. Today, as far as I can determine, little or nothing has been done to eliminate the plume. I am aware that the City of Richfield is now in the process of removing nearly 4,000 tons of soil and up to 90 large trees from Sheridan Pond Park. Are the trees all diseased? Is it true that trees, once uprooted, will first be ground to sawdust and then burned? I was told that by, at the meeting the other night at the park by one of his staff. What are the contractors who remove the diseased trees required by law to do with the wood? What danger do the trees in Sheridan Park pose to the children upon the playground, the pets, and the owners who routinely walk through the park? Why are the superfund dollars set aside for the pollution cleanup not being utilized? Why is the City of Richfield being taxed again and again to clean up the plume? While after at least 10 years, the site and surrounding neighborhood has been on the MPCAs list of high priority for cleanup? Were the tenants moved into the Novo apartment complex advised that the underground pollution is harmful and has harmful effects upon humans? Were those who worked in this polluted area, constructing the sweet street of 66th Street and putting up the Novo complex advised of the contaminants in which they toiled?
Excuse me, Ruane, if you could please add your comments. Thank you.
By means of my certified letter dated July 20, 2022, to top executives of the two of the Novo Department Development Companies, Broadway and Trident, I made them aware of the MPCAs' concern. Copies of my letter were sent to all Richfield City Council members, to Mr. Greg Small of the MPCA and Ms. Amy Hyder, as also of the MPCA, to Manager Katie Rodriguez, to Kristen Aster of Richfield, to Mary Teagan, City Attorney, and to John Stark, who was at-time Director of Community Services, I believe, City of Richfield. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. We have one last card here filled out for Kelly. If Kelly could please come to the podium, share your name and your address, and then you have up to three minutes for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name's Kelly Clemmie from 7245 Clinton Avenue South. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. The reason for my appearance is unfortunately due to harassment from a neighbor next door who uses Code 1305.25 regarding 48-hour street parking restrictions. I have specific reasons for parking one of my vehicles out in front of my house. It keeps it out of our way for our day-to-day operation from our home-run business. I'm a contractor, and we also own a lawn and snow business. My neighbor does not like when I park my truck in front of my house, and so she has complained dozens of times. She basically found something she believes is a legitimate way to be a thorn in our side. Her complaints do not result in my moving the truck from the front of the home with just a few feet to satisfy the ordinance that it be moved. Does this make sense for her to repeatedly make this complaint, knowing it will not be moved? No, it does not. My proposal, I'm sorry, Councilmember O'Leary told me that most cities have a 72-hour parking limit. This change would not help in my case, as the neighbor just wants to inconvenience us. Be it every 48 or 72 hours, she will still call. The police also informed me that in our many conversations, that they do not enforce the rules unless a complaint has been made. They also feel this is a waste of public resources and harassment against us. My proposal is that the code be amended, where, code be amended where if a complaint has been reported, the resident or owner of the vehicle has an opportunity to contact enforcement to confirm that it's owned by the resident of the property and is operable, licensed, and insured to the property owner where it's parked. Then the city could ignore future complaints against the owner without having to show favoritism towards one party or the other. I'd like to thank the police department, including the enforcement officers and Sergeant Sieve, who've helped us with this, tried to, they've been very kind and understanding about the matter, but their hands are tied due to the wording of the ordinance. Sadly, there are people who just wish to be difficult and will use any method available to harass others. I understand, appreciate that this ordinance is there to keep Richfield from looking like a junkyard. There's no one-size-fits-all solution, but it certainly could be improved upon to prevent harassment such as we experience. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I guess you don't answer questions, I heard that. And thanks to Councilmember O'Leary for responding right away today and encouraging me to come and speak.
Thank you for coming and sharing your comments. And then just as a reminder, I forgot to say this, but when people come to the open forum with comments or questions, and there are items for staff follow-up, the staff will follow up with you. So I have your contact information. I'm wondering if Councilmember Hayford O'Leary has an email or if the city manager has an email already.
I've not sent any emails.
Okay, so if you would like, you can just come up here and just write it on here, and then, or you can give that to our city manager with your email, and then they will follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people here in person for the open forum? Okay, and then I am looking to see, I can't see though, if anybody is on the line for the open forum. Nope, okay. And then did we get any emails from folks? Nope, okay. Seeing as we have nobody here and no one on the line, I will close the open forum and go to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes of the Joint City Council and the HRA Work Session of October 17, 2022, the regular city council meeting of November 9, 2022, and the City Council Work Session of November 9, 2022.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Thank you, a motion has been made and seconded to move the minutes, to approve the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the minutes have been approved. Now, we do have four presentations today. I'm actually going to switch them around and get the proclamation done first, since it is a pretty short item. That way you don't have to sit through three annual presentations from our boards and commissioners. But I will ask Kelsey Nagel to join me up at the podium. And it is a proclamation declaring November 26, a small business Saturday in Richfield. And Kelsey is the Richfield Chamber of Commerce representative, so I will come by you. Okay, so I will read this and sign it. Proclamation of the City of Richfield. Whereas Richfield celebrates our local small businesses and contributes to make the local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, SBA, small businesses continue to rebound from the economic recession brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas over the past 25 years, small businesses have accounted for 2/3 of the nation's employment growth, and whereas for many local residents, the Thanksgiving holiday kicked off the season of gathering, dining, shopping, and experiencing arts and cultures, arts and culture, excuse me, and consumers know that supporting small, independently-owned businesses have positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And whereas the City of Richfield has partnered with Hennepin County in the multi-jurisdictional Local Love Campaign, which encourages residents to support local businesses that create jobs, boost the economy, and make our communities vibrant and livable. And whereas the SBA, as well as advocacy groups and other public and private organizations, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Maria Rigan Gonzalez, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2022, a Small Business Saturday in the City of Richfield, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, proclaimed on this 22nd day of November, 2022. So, Kelsey, I will ask you to just share a little bit about where people can learn more about our local businesses in Richfield, or if there's anything that the chamber is doing that people can learn from.
Let's see, so the Chamber of Commerce website is a great place to check out. If you are a small business or any business in Richfield, it is great to be a part of and come and meet everybody. It's amazing to watch people connect and network with each other, and when you get in front of each other, you kind of are on top of each other's brain. So coming to those events, checking out the website, finding, finding who's involved in the city through the website, if you're, whether it be a lawn service or card making, or whatever the case may be. You can easily search it on the website and find out who's local and who likes to be involved.
Thank you so much for receiving this proclamation. I thought of the Richfield Community Page. If people want to ask if you're looking for a certain kind of gift or something, I'm sure you can crowdsource it and ask folks what their favorite Richfield business is, too. So thank you so much for representing our businesses in Richfield and for receiving this on behalf of the businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you for coming. I'll just leave this. To our presentations, so the first one is the Advisory Board of Health Commission Annual Presentation given by Chair Katrina DeVore. So if Katrina could please come up and to the microphone, and thank you for reporting.
Hi there. Katrina was unable to make it tonight. She's sick, but I'm the co-chair. My name's Rebecca Kason. Happy to share minutes. The Richfield Advisory Board of Health meets January through May, September and October. In 2022, the Advisory Board of Health was able to gather in person again, and it was a productive year. Partnered January through March, partnered with the Association for Nonsmokers in Minnesota to develop draft ordinance language for the, sorry, for the elimination of flavored tobacco in the city, coming to council in early 2023, discuss the tobacco disclosure notice for communities in common, and help develop draft ordinance language. Cities staff are still researching this issue and its impact on disparate populations. Sorry, I don't like public speaking. In April, learned from the Richfield Farmers Market.
Do you want me to come and read it? Do you want me to do it? Okay.
I can do it, yeah.
Okay.
In April, learned about the Richfield Farmers Market, presentation by Bonnie Hannah Powers, the Farmers Market Coordinator. In May, the meeting council was due to lack of attendance. On September, October, discussions of goals for the 2023 planning. A learning year for the group. We'll be inviting a variety of subject matter experts to share more about what impacts the health of our community. Welcoming and onboarding new members, hoping to have full membership, and continue to research and recommend good healthiest policy to the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That deserves a clap. Thank you so much, Rebecca, for coming and presenting that. You did an exceptional job speaking. I know people, a lot of people are afraid of public speaking. You did a great job. Thank you so much. The next presentation is a human, oh, and sorry. Did anyone have any comments or questions on the Advisory Board of Health presentation? Councilmember Whelan?
I'll just say thank you. I know especially through the pandemic, the staff who work with the Advisory Board of Health were very, just very busy. And so there was not as many additional projects moving forward, but I appreciate the conversation around flavored tobacco that's ongoing. And I know for any of these presentations, just wanted to comment that we recently had our interviews for future commissioners, and I think some of the open spots will be getting filled, which is great. We had a lot of wonderful people stepping up who want to help lead in our community. And so thank you, thank the rest of these commissions who are already serving, and the folks stepping up to join them.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Other comments or questions? I'll just say thank you so much to our Advisory Board of Health. I am a public health professional in my day job, so I'm a super public health nerd. And actually, the reason why I ran for office is because 80% of what creates health is in our communities. And us here, all the people in this room here, in our Advisory Board of Health and folks in our local communities are the ones that are making decisions on the 80% of things that impact our health. So a huge thank you to the Advisory Board of Health for all that you've been doing to make sure that our community members are healthy and safe, but very close to my heart as well. So thank you for, if you could please pass the thanks along to the rest of the commissioners, that'd be greatly appreciated. The next presentation is the Human Rights Commission, and also an annual presentation by Chair Walter Burke. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Walter Burke. I'm the chairperson for the Richfield Human Rights Commission. And we've had a very good year. I'm going to start off with, I think, what is the greatest success from the Human Rights Commission was the efforts by Maru Luka, our former chairperson of the Human Rights Commission, in furthering, initiating, persuading, a whole bunch of other adjectives, to have the city draft and accept a conversion therapy order. Very important for the community. My understanding is Richfield is perhaps the ninth city in Minnesota to pass such an ordinance. That's quite an accomplishment. You know, kudos to Luka, Maru Luka, and the commission furthering this effort. Our appreciation to the mayor and to the council for making that happen. And Chris Watson was very cooperative as a liaison, I'm kidding. Thank you. Two of our members, Tyler Olson and Adrian Lee, they worked very hard this year on outreach for more inclusiveness in the Human Rights Commission. We really need to step up our outreach, diversify both the membership of the Human Rights Commission and the knowledge about what the Human Rights Commission does. Definitely make mention of Tyler's and Adrian's efforts. We also work closely with the Just Deeds Group on racial covenants. For those who aren't aware, the racial covenants are items in people, some people's titles to make it clear that people of certain races and ethnicities are not permitted to purchase properties. Look, happily, the Minnesota Legislature made those no longer in effect, but those covenants are still there. Part of the education effort for the residents of Minnesota, there is a process to get rid of those covenants. We started those efforts with Just Deeds. We're going to make a greater effort to aim to get rid of as many of those racial covenants in Richfield. We work really closely with Deputy Chief Flaherty and the Richfield for Equitable Public Safety Group. Had a number of presentations by both concerning police statistics, culminated Had a number of presentations by both concerning police statistics, culminated the recent presentation for the city by Chief of Police. The Human Rights Commission feels like they're kind of the intermediary between those two groups, and it's been quite an education, listen to both sides talk about these issues. We've been asked by reps to become more involved in their efforts. That is something that the commission will be looking at. We also, for the first time, had, to my knowledge, first time, the Human Rights Commission put together a legal rights clinic. They have the free legal clinic for Richfield residents. Took place at the community center. If I remember perfectly correct, we helped at least 18 people with over 20-something issues, legal issues. All the attorneys who volunteered are either Richfield residents or attorneys who work in Richfield. I have no idea how many law firms there are in Richfield. Nice to see the majority of them come out just looking ahead to potentially do that twice a year. That's a request, monthly, that's not feasible, but we're certainly going to try to make it twice. We presented to the mayor and city council eight proclamations this year. Thank you for stepping up. We had a lot of, we had some outreach through Pennfest. Our vice chair Tiffany Bigley was very involved in that. Wonderful to have a booth at Pennfest and educate the public about what the Human Rights Commission does. And again, that's part of that outreach to broaden the demographics of. We also, something that didn't make the annual report, I take credit for that mistake, the efforts by the commission to get a legal kiosk here in Richfield. Again, Chris was very influential and helpful with that, and I want to thank that. For those who don't know, a legal kiosk is an electronic device that people can go up to, and they can learn about their rights, they can get court forms, they can get access to legal aid. And luckily, the model that the city has, I don't know if it's been set up yet, I know it either has been set up and accessed to the public, or it's on the way, that you can actually attend hearings, court hearings by remote, which is a wonderful service for residents who have hearings that they must attend, they're told to appear by Zoom, and they may not have the technology to. Well, now they can come to the city hall, and they can have access to a free device that allows them. Legal kiosk program is amazing, and again, with the commission defined something that is, was free to the city that provides such great service, I think it was a great way for us.
Great. Thank you so much for that report out. Any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and then Councilmember Whelan.
I just wanted to say that I'm very impressed with all the activities you've done. Of course, we see things like the proclamations and the conversion therapy that you ban, obviously, that you bring to us. But it's so great to hear about the things like directly benefiting residents, the active stuff out in the community is so useful, and this commission's been so engaged consistently. So thank you for your leadership and keeping it that way and making it better every year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan.
Yeah, I was going to echo similar comments that I think it is always exciting to see what commissioners bring, like, in their own connections, skills, ideas, that there's certain things that commissions, I mean, some of them have to do, some of them are reacting to things, but there's also room for these new ideas. And I think especially the legal clinic, this kiosk, is something I would have never thought of, but is, I believe, comes out of some of your own skills, some of the other skills of others in the group, and is just really wonderful. And I also appreciate the outreach piece, that it's, again, referring to these interviews we just did. It's something we ask every person who wants to be on a commission is how, and not just because we are expecting an answer, but because we are looking for ideas. It's a hard thing of how do we reach more and more of the community? How do we engage more people? And so it's great to hear that that's been such an explicit focus for the Human Rights Commission this year. So thank you, and pass on our thanks to everyone else.
Thank you.
And I'll just add thanks as well, and please also let the rest of the folks know on the commission that we greatly appreciate their work. And as you were sharing your report, I just thought of two items that I wanted to kind of pitch or throw out there based on what you were sharing. So you were talking about the diversity of the Human Rights Commission and helping expand that. There was work done by the Human Rights Commission maybe like eight to six years ago, specifically on helping our boards and commissions diversify. And I think it was successful, but it was kind of, you know, you have to continue the work, and it can't be a one and done thing. And so I think some of that, there's a lot, a strong foundation to build off of in work that had been done in the past, but also I do see the importance of picking it back up. And it'd be a great topic to connect with other commissions about, because I do feel like sometimes the Human Rights Commission is the go-to place for people of color and say, oh, you're a person of color, join the Human Rights Commission. And we want diversity of all kinds on all of our boards and commissions. So that could be something that might be worthwhile to partner on with other boards and commissions in that vein. And then lastly, connecting, or just going back to the proclamations, and I know some community groups had contacted us around the times of the proclamations to say, hey, we'd love to do an event in the community, whether it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, Juneteenth, Pride, leaders out in the community who really want to start, get something started in Richfield, but maybe because they came to us or didn't know the process of hosting an event, which I frankly wouldn't know exactly the permits I need to do, you know, looking at things like porta potties, all these kinds of things, requesting the space. It was, we weren't able to support them in that. And I'm just thinking of a simple guide, that if a community group is interested in doing an event, just like, and maybe we have something on the website, I'm not sure, maybe we already have that. But I think if a group is interested in hosting an event to celebrate the diversity of our community, that's an asset, and then, you know, a guide that could just help them, here's what you need to know, you know, six months in advance, three months in advance, and that could be a resource then that's used by groups all over, so that that is not a barrier of just not knowing exactly who to contact, what to do, what to consider, because they haven't done it before. So those were just two little items that I wanted to pass along. But thank you so much for all the things that the commission has been doing. It's really cool to hear, like Councilmember Whelan said, just seeing how people's unique assets and talents are showing up, and the work that you decided to do this year is really great. So thank you for your leadership, and please pass on the gratitude.
I will. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. And then our last presentation is the Sustainability Commission Annual Presentation, and we will, and then Chair Amanda Keeper will be giving that presentation. Thank you for joining us, Amanda.
Good evening, mayor and council. Again, my name is Amanda Keeper. I'm the chair of the Sustainability Commission. The Sustainability Commission had its third year this year, and we met nine times in 2022, and I think we had a really productive year. The commission was able to provide a lot of feedback on various city projects, both by providing comments to staff and several outside partners. And commissioners were really active. They individually volunteered for a wide variety of projects. So I'll just give some highlights. We did try something new this year that I think went really well. So at the beginning of the year, we created a work plan for the commission, which was sort of intended to help the commission understand what sort of projects that city staff were going to be working on, but also an opportunity for commissioners to brainstorm other things that they might want to be involved in, and offer some of their volunteer time to help supplement the work that city staff was able to provide with, you know, kind of a limited number of hours in the week for city staff to be working on things. And so that was, I think, a big success. We came up with a lot of ideas for things that we wanted to work on, and it inspired several projects, including a digital sustainability guidebook that one of our commissioners led, is leading, that we hope to publish early next year. But that'll provide just like an online resource for Richfield residents to be able to kind of quickly go and see a variety of Richfield and county and maybe state or other resources available for different sustainability topics, ranging from organics recycling to Woodlake Nature Center programming, to tree planting, a whole variety of things. So it's kind of meant to be just like a really quick guide. Obviously, all those things are kind of on the website, but this way residents will have like a PDF that they can go to and get some of those sustainability resources quickly. Another project we did was the commission developed a set of tree planting guidelines, and we provided that in a letter to the council. Some other things that we were involved in, some things with partners. So we had the representatives from the League of Women Voters attend one of our meetings, and they're excited about putting on an eco fair in 2023. And so we had the opportunity to brainstorm exhibitor ideas with them about that, and hopefully look forward to continuing to work with them on pulling that fair together next year. We had a couple of cooperative events with the Community Services Commission. So we held an Earth Day cleanup at Richfield Lake in partnership with the CSC. And we also had a joint presentation from city staff about the city's various forestry efforts with the Community Services Commission. Kind of along those lines, and along the lines of what inspired providing the tree planting guidelines to city council and staff, was we had the opportunity to provide some input on a couple of tree plantings that took place in city parks. So Christian and Donaldson Parks had tree plantings from Tree Trust this year, and the commission was able to advise on species selection and planting distribution. And doing that kind of led us to want to provide more broad guidelines for future tree plantings. That was a good opportunity. And we've provided feedback on a variety of other projects, including the ongoing implementation of the Partners in Energy Plan, a new initiative from the city to create some community gardens, an organics recycling audit that took place this year as part of the city's organized selection program. And most recently, we had a presentation from community development staff about some changes to city code related to tree planting requirements for developers in the city, and we're able to provide some advice on that code change and some of the logistics that'll go into forming that new tree planting fund in association with that code change. Our commissioners, again, like I said, they were pretty active, so they also participated in a variety of other efforts, including a variety of other like outreach and communication efforts for residents, including making an organics recycling video for city residents, participating in some interviews related to renewable energy and participation in some of Excel's, Excel Energy's renewable energy offerings and programs. One of our commissioners went to a local event called Buzz Fest, which was put on by a kind of a local Bloomington-Richfield group that's focused on alternative lawns and pollinator gardens in residential yards. And he attended and did a demonstration on rain barrel use. And also participation in a focus group for the city's strategic planning efforts. So we had a pretty, like I said, a pretty wide variety of things that we were able to advise on. It was interesting to use the work plan model and to try to focus on making our meetings that we had into work sessions as often as possible so that we could collaborate and come up with those ideas. And I think it was quite successful, and we look forward to trying that again next year. And I would just also just kind of put a pitch out that we have always had two spots for youth members on the Sustainability Commission, but we've yet to have a youth representative, and that is something that we would really love to have next year, so there's a rolling admission for that. So for anyone listening, if you have some young people that are excited about sustainability in Richfield, we'd really encourage them to reach out and maybe join our team. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that update and report. Comments or questions from council? Councilmember Whelan.
I'll just say I get to be liaison to the Sustainability Commission, and it's been exciting, especially with the work plan that is, again, incorporating like what are people's own ideas, their own skills, their own passions. It's been exciting to see that unfold, and just really am excited for everything that's been done. Thank you, thank the rest of the commission. I know part of the broader conversations, the council is going to be in this coming year looking, revisiting our climate action plan, really prioritizing that. Excited to do that in partnership with the commission, and really just to see this work continue to grow, continue to engage more residents, continue to, I mean, it already crosses several departments to continue to expand and include the work of all our departments across the city. So thank you in particular for your leadership. I know that you were leading the Sustainability Commission into being before it even existed, and have been on it since it was created, and just I'm excited at how much progress we've made as a city, obviously seeing the state of the world. We've got more progress to go, but feel really good about everything that's in motion. So thank you and everyone who's a part of it.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, I don't have a lot to add other than thank you for your work and your commission's work. It is, it's clear when there's passion for the subject area, that's come through, and particularly enjoyed the conversation we were able to have at the work session over the weekend. So I look forward to continuing to see your great work.
And I'll just end by saying, it's so impressive to see, you know, a new commission come into being and how residents got that started, and were really passionate and got it going with staff, and all the things, really important issues that you've tackled as a commission, and how all of that has spread with our residents who also have a lot of energy and excitement around this issue. So I always love to see what's coming out of your commission, because it's such a new commission, but there's so much opportunity, and I feel like the commission has just done an exceptional job of taking advantage of that opportunity that we have. So thank you for your leadership as well in your report.
Thank you. Thank you too, mayor and council. And yes, a special thanks to Councilmember Whelan for being our liaison, and I also want to thank our city staff liaison, Rachel Wintle, who is pivotal to keeping us on track. So thanks, folks.
Thank you so much. That concludes our presentations. So I will move us to the next item, which is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, mayor. Last week, we had a resident who was also a Hennepin County EMS paramedic, and he wrote to us about the city's residency requirement for Richfield firefighters. The requirement is that firefighters must live within 10 minutes of a station for their first 10 years in order to have enough staff to respond when there are heavy call volumes. The requirement has been in place since 2010, and it was supported by the firefighters when enacted and when extended in 2016. It is even more critical now, since call volumes have increased almost 25% since 2010, and since HD EMS are often arriving later to the scene. Mr. Garcia was notified of the requirement in his offer letter, and that he had one year to move within the 10 minutes. Before that year was up, he got an offer from another department closer to his home and chose to separate from the Richfield Fire Department. Of course, we wish he had stayed with Richfield, but respect his decision. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Okay. The next item is Claims and Payroll.
I'll move Claims and Payroll.
A second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to move Claims and Payroll. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Claims and Payroll has been approved. And our last item is hats off to hometown heads, and Councilmember Whelan.
I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And I had one more. Come back to me. I have to remember what it was.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I will take my metaphorical hat off to our commissioners, because we got to re-interview many of them. We had 25 interviews on Saturday, and it was great to hear from folks who are passionate about our community and doing the work. And also, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
25 interviews Saturday. That was, yeah, that was a lot. Councilmember Whelan.
Just wanted to let folks know, especially anyone on the east side here, that the D-line Bus Rapid Transit is starting up on December 22. Just wanted to let folks know, especially anyone on the east side here, that the D-line bus rapid transit is starting up on December 3rd. I mean, so it's right here along Portland. The Route 5, the bus that has been going on Portland, will still come sometimes and stop at every stop, but most of it will get replaced by the rapid transit, which has fewer stops, operates a little bit more like a light rail in that you buy your ticket before you get on or scan your card before you get on. But it is going to be much faster. And so, if you live nearby and it goes from Mall of America all the way through downtown Minneapolis up to, I forget if it's Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center, but the big transit center up there. And so, if you are a transit user, I would encourage you to check it out. And if you are not yet a transit user and go downtown occasionally, that will be a much more convenient way to do so.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Whelan. And I'll just let people know, last weekend was the opening of the Minnesota Whitecaps Ice Hockey Game. The Minnesota Whitecaps are a women's professional hockey team that has decided to call Richfield Ice Arena their home, their permanent home. And so, I got to go to the game on Friday and drop the puck. It missed, it made me miss my ice hockey days. But now that I won't be mayor and will have nothing to do with my life, maybe I will pick up hockey again. But it was really fun. And okay, there were so many amazing things, but I think the thing that I loved the most was the countless amount of young girl hockey players of all ages that were there with their teams, with their families, with their siblings. They all had their jerseys. They were super excited. And just to see kind of like the next generation of our girl leaders was so cool. So if you haven't checked them out, look them up online, go, you know, to a game with your family. It's super fun. Even if you don't follow hockey, it's a really fun thing to do. And again, make it a date night and go to one of our local businesses for dinner before or after. And and just, there's a lot of ways to to support this amazing team, but also just keep building that sense of community here in Richfield. So that was a really fun opportunity. And that is all I have. So I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone.